One foot.
Because they're going to take up right. Y'all.
Yeah, yeah.
Have to increase the ingress and egress.
Well, Cory said that you would volunteer this property.
I'll let that double. You ready?
A sixth person will not be watching and just want to prove it. And I would predict that to be October of next year. We need to do something.
Tell him you don't want to.
He didn't care.
He's kidding.
She's right here.
Sixty minutes?
Let's come to order. Tonight is Tuesday night, December the 6th. We're at the Civic Center for two meetings. The first is a special meeting of the City Council called for a couple of time-sensitive issues that we need to do. I'm gonna take them a little bit up, I'm sorry, call the roll. Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Albright?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Here.
Mr. Putnam?
I'm gonna go a little bit out of order here and talk about the development order for City Hall. We're going to proceed with the development order as if we actually have to do this. The planning has only looked at it last month. So, we're going to, I'm gonna go with these official order proceedings about this. Planning Board and City Council shall determine whether it is in the jurisdiction of this matter, determine whether any member must abstain or disqualified from voting. Planning Board and City Council may take official notice of unknown information related to the issue, including any state law or applicable ordinances, resolutions, rules, official policies of the city, other public records or facts where appropriate. Matters officially noticed need not be established by evidence that are binding to the extent that they are relevant and material. Planning Board and City Council members may view the site as the proposed development with or without notification to the parties, but after the visit shall state the time, manner, and circumstance of the view for the record. Staff of the developer and interest persons will present information relevant to the proposed development, and an opportunity for rebuttal shall be given opposing by opposing parties. The Planning Board of the City may ask additional persons to testify and may ask additional questions of any person who has testified or presented evidence. Those are the basic rules of our development order. Nick, you can help me out here. Because this property belongs to us and we're gonna build a city building on our properties, is it actually necessary to do a development order?
No, it's not. And actually, the language you're reading about ex parte communications would be pretty hard to apply with this since all of you do know a lot about this project. It's been discussed at multiple meetings. So, not all the evidence would be strictly what's here tonight. I think Mel wanted to do it this way because it's such an important project and it's been a little while since it's been talked about. I didn't realize we were going to do this, but if we want to go ahead and proceed and treat it as a public hearing, take comment from the public, that would be fine. And as I mentioned, I think you probably all have had technically some ex parte communications simply at your other council meetings, and that's fine because we can't exactly follow that procedure entirely, and I don't think that the development order approval would generally be required since it's your own project.
In keeping with what Planning and zoning did last night, though, they considered it and they did have a vote on it, so I want us to follow through on that and actually have this developed off, just in case anybody ever asks questions about that. But I know a couple of us have the same opinion that we didn't actually need to do this, but there's no harm in doing it. Is that correct?
No, I don't think so. We don't want to establish a pattern to always do this, but I think it's clearly on the record that we're doing this one time. It's a little unusual and we won't necessarily be doing it again for other projects.
Is there any coming from the table about the development order for City Hall?
If we do that, if we do this, are there any negative ramifications towards the city for this in the future?
You could get an argument from somebody on a future project that, well, you did this process once, you need to do it again, but like I said, this is the best of my knowledge and I really didn't know about this at the time, but to the best of my knowledge, it's not required and we won't be doing it again unless we decide that the project warrants it and that we want to invite additional comments. It's not that you would still have an action by your board to do certain construction projects or developments, it's just the procedural difference of calling it a hearing and additional notice that we've probably done.
But one of the issues that came up was that we're letting the public know that we're following the same procedures they have to follow. No comments here. Are there comments from the floor? We're talking about the development order to build the City Hall.
So, why set a precedent for doing it if it's not necessary? I mean, it's some public institution, oh, this is a public building, it's not a commercial zoning, so why start a precedent for doing it if it's not necessary?
As Mel said, it's kind of crossing Ts and dots and Is. Seems so many people are most interested in that these days. That's why we even pursued it to start with. But it is on the property and it is our City Hall, it's gonna be built with our funds. Lord have mercy, we've talked about it long enough.
Actually, I'm just kind of thinking through this on the fly, but a development order is generally adopted by ordinance. And we're not doing that tonight. It may really be better just to take whatever public comment there is and do a normal approval and not.
Would your comment about the development order is approved by ordinance?
No.
No?
No. We never approve development orders.
Okay.
That's not our LDREs.
Okay. But this is our development order. But if the council feels uncomfortable doing this, I'm okay with it. I just didn't want people to point fingers later we're not following our own rules.
The only thing I have says if we do it, let it be in the records for sure, this is one time and one time only, just to make sure, you know, that we don't set a precedent.
I don't see any need for doing it. I mean, we've discussed this backwards and forwards for a year.
Longer than that, like five years.
If we don't do it, what are the ramifications for that? Nothing.
Well, we've gone through the procedures anyway of providing the information on the development order, so it's just a formality. But if you're uncomfortable doing it, I'm okay with just grabbing it.
It's also gone through P N Z, which is an open hearing to public, they wanted to ask questions to.
But then we'll go ahead and open it up for, again, any public comment.
Have there been objections to it suddenly?
No.
Is this tied into the fact that people are ticked off because y'all decided to do what we wanted to do with the long fence at Parker Park? And there's been so many comments?
I don't understand your question.
You've stated at least three times in meetings when people have said, "The city didn't follow its own ordinances putting up the fence at Parker Park because it faced it the wrong way," and you have responded to them saying, "We're the city, we can do whatever we want." Is this a reaction to that saying something? I mean, this makes no sense.
That has nothing to do with building the City Hall.
Yeah, the fence thing's not a dead issue.
I think this is just something to make sure our public knows exactly what's going on. But whether we do it or not, so.
Personally, I don't think we need to do anything but approve the development order. We're not getting any further comment. There's a motion to approve the development order for City Hall. So, move. Please call the roll.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
No.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the award of the City Hall contract. The contract. You have documents on it, but the total contract comes out to?
Four sixty-three, is that correct?
Four sixty-two, three fifty.
Four sixty-two, three fifty. That's the site development and construction of the City Hall. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Sounds good to me.
It's actually within budget. We're very fortunate that this has worked out this way. Any further comments from the table? Any comments from the floor?
Yes. I read the contract, but refresh me on this. Does this include sidewalks, parking, every little thing?
It includes paved, parking, and sidewalks in front of the building and meets ADA requirements. It does not include some gravel pads that we're going to put behind the building, but it includes stormwater, drainage, ingress, egress, all those kind of things, utilities, turnkey. Any other questions? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the City Hall contract. Award the City Hall contract for four sixty-three.
I'm sorry, two fifty. Four sixty-two, three fifty.
So.
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Okay, the sewer rehab bid that we talked about in the past, Philip's gonna bring us up to date for it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I know if we're doing, we added twenty-two, so we.
Yes, sir. Sewer rehab project is basically what we're doing is we're going in, we're fixing wet wells, other areas where we're having a large amount of intrusion from groundwater. We only got the two bids, one from GCU, the other one from PSG. PSG came in quite a bit lower than GCU, so those guys are the ones that actually got the bid for fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. The next bid was seventy-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Tonight, I asked the council that we approved that so we can get this project rolling.
And the reason we added more money to this project is because we only allocated forty thousand dollars in the budget and we added twenty more thousand to that. Now, this bid is for fifty-one thousand.
Yes, sir.
For the rehab of the scheduled manhole rehabs this year.
Yep.
Other questions from the table?
Who's the vendor?
PSG, Professional Services Group, LLC.
Have they done work here before?
Not to my knowledge.
I have another question. How many did we rehab last year?
We did a total of six. I think it was six, what was it, last year? But they were pretty bad off. We have, we only have one that's in serious, serious need, located on Fifteenth Street. It's got a two-inch hole in the side of it, water's literally just gushing in. But I think we've added twelve to the project this year that we deemed more necessary to fix now rather than later. We're getting more bank for our buck, so to speak, this year. GCU actually got it last year. They came in at a decent price, but as you can tell, I mean, they went up quite substantially from last year. We are, we're doing twelve wet wells and four valve boxes this year.
So, this is a budgeted expense. So, the questions from the floor. Here you go, the comment. Chair will entertain a motion to award the sewer rehab bid the lowest bidder.
Make that motion.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes this special meeting. Without Paul Grohl, we're going now to our regular workshop. First item on the agenda is the Parker Park mural, Ms. Albright.
I, we have a great park, almost ready to use, and we have a bathroom that I would love to see some murals painted on the outside of it to make it look a little bit more attractive if you're going down Ninety-Eight. I just want to know what the consensus of, what the council feels. If we could find somebody that would donate their time and possibly supplies, otherwise perhaps the city could help contribute towards their supplies, but I was just wondering what the council feels about that, rather than having the white box, having some mural painted on there.
I'm in favor of it and I'm in favor of the city bond that supplies for the artists.
Yeah. Looks like a big snowball.
Yes, indeed.
I think we can probably find someone.
Well, Philip and I have been talking and he thought he, and I haven't talked to him for probably the last month, but he said he had somebody that appeared to be interested in doing it, so.
I literally have not seen her in weeks.
Okay, okay.
She's disappeared.
So, she has disappeared.
She's, yeah, she's around, I just.
Yeah, okay, so we'll seek her out or we'll maybe do some advertising just by word of mouth that if anybody's interested in doing a mural, who should they see? You, Philip, or Mel, or who?
I would say you.
Oh. All right, so contact me if you're listening on the tape. Contact me.
The lady I spoke with about it, the only thing that she requested was to have a clear picture of what it is you guys want on the bathroom and not.
Leave it up to her?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Well, she's the artist.
So, maybe you can just funnel your ideas to me and we'll see where we can go with this.
Camouflage and deer.
No.
There's plenty of beer over there.
No.
Oh, we're talking about the park.
The big bear.
Was the bathroom the only reason we're opening part of the park at this time?
Power was just, or Duke Energy was out there installing the necessary infrastructure to turn on the power. Philip, did you see it? It was actually fully connected?
I haven't flipped the switch yet, but yesterday while we were out there at our gathering, they ran the power from the power pole wire by the fence to the bathroom, from the bathroom, I mean, to the power pole, from the power pole to the bathroom, to the mirror box.
It's light on there tonight.
Yeah, it's hooked up. Now.
And then grass, grass was the other one.
There was some work that needed to be done on a gate. There was some alignment issues with the gate. There was some work to be, some touch-up items to be done inside the restroom itself and then the grassing in the park.
Well, that all needs to be done.
Correct.
I mean, before anybody uses the box.
Correct.
So, are we gonna have a ribbon cutting ceremony to let the people know that it is open for your use?
That would be up to y'all.
I would think so.
I think so. I think that'd be great.
The inside of the bathroom, I understand the finish was not adequate.
It was not up to our standard, yes, sir.
The contractor's in there working on some improvements.
So, it should be just a matter of days before we can shut them on those stays anyway?
The actual nuts and bolts of it, for the bathroom, the latch on the gate, yes, but if you have to come back and see the moored parking area, then we need to give that time to, for the seat to get established.
That won't happen before April or May.
Probably not. Sod could be established if it, if the weather stays mild and air dead.
This is for the parking area? What about some sort of gravel? I know that we have the grass on the parking. My concern is, you have a little bit of rain, we're gonna have mud every time somebody drives or parks there, even if, so what about putting gravel or some kind of, you guys know the terminology, crushed gravel or something, rather than the grass?
Well, that, it's not as easy as just putting gravel out there. I mean, that affects a whole lot of issues with the park, especially our retention areas.
And like I said.
But the way Parker Park is laid out, the way it's sloped and everything, the parking area has been completely dry, they might be moist, but as far as creating a mud hole, that won't happen. Our biggest concern when the park is open is keeping the younger kids from going in there and doing donuts over the place like they do down there in the canal. That's gonna be our biggest issue, I believe. But once we get the grass established, then we'll be perfectly fine. If you, if you look at the park, it's got a nice little crown about midways and the water runs to the very edge of the property, so I think we'll be okay.
You're talking about the sod being established, the new seeded area?
I, I'm a hundred percent agreeing with the mayor. I mean, we're not gonna get grass there until the season comes back and we're just, you know, it's supposed to get down in the thirties later on this week, so I mean, it's not gonna happen no time soon.
Well, I don't see us waiting for the grass to be strong enough or sod in March, April, May before we have a ribbon. I think that's crazy.
No, we can do that as soon as they're finished.
You know, I mean, people need to be able to use it.
Well, we haven't been able to use it yet anyways.
No, that's true.
It'll take another month or two if you need to establish the grass. And then if you start tracking it up and you've got to regrade it, you've got to do all kinds of things.
And I agree with you, a month or two, but when I'm looking at April, I'm thinking, shoot, that's five, six months.
Right.
Well, the special committee actually was talking about it and they want to go back to the street in February because the grass is not well done. I really love City Park, ready to handle that, but if it's not, we end up going up and messing it up too badly. But I don't see any reason people can't go and come for passive recreation over there in the meantime.
Keep the parking blocked off and let people walk in and they can still do recreation.
See how it goes.
If they can drive anywhere, they'll drive everywhere.
That's a fact.
Other comments about the park? Yes, ma'am.
So, now can be ready for the gumbo festival?
It technically is ready for the gumbo festival, but if the grass is not established and the committee doesn't want to go over there, they prefer to have it by the highway one more time. We didn't ask them to do that.
They meant yesterday.
That's what they told us.
A few of them went over to the park yesterday and that was the decision that I heard that was made at that time.
The slippage fees for the city docks. Our harbor master gave me a working document. I looked at that, did some research in Port St. Joe and Panama City about some of the dockage fees. I don't believe we've changed dockage rates in quite some time. As you see by the document I put in, the packet, we actually spent nearly a million dollars of the city, or will have spent a million dollars of the city's money by the time we get through with this pay, with this project. That is in the form of slip fees paid that were saved and previous councils have put money aside from the general fund into this fund. Our rate, the best comparison rate is Port St. Joe, which charges four sixty-one a month. And you can see where we are now and the increase that we're looking at, which is still nowhere near Port St. Joe, but it's a sizable increase for the folks who use our canal. As you know, it's gonna be a beautiful place and very convenient and very nice when we get down there. I just feel like it's appropriate that we raise the fees for our slippage, try to recover some of the money from the users that we spent out of the tax base. These numbers don't have to be set in stone, but these numbers represent something George gave me and massage just a little bit when I talked to other folks. But the folks that are looking for spring rentals kind of want to know what these rates are gonna be.
I think they need to go up. We have put a lot of money into it. We haven't raised our rates. We're not even close to being comparable to communities around us. Even at the rates that we raise it to, we'll still be helping our.
Highly competitive, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What's, what does Port St. Joe have that we don't have?
Nothing.
So, they're charging four hundred, four hundred and sixty-something dollars a month? Is that what you said?
Four sixty-one. I guess, well, we have a protected harbor, they have a protected harbor. All but seven of our boat slips will have both water and power available. That's pretty good. And those are designated transit slips out there on the end. Remember all of our conversations a long time ago, part of our grant for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars was that we would provide some slips for transits that come and go, people that are literally traversing across and are in and out. You know, this is not a voting issue tonight. Take a look at it and do all the research you want as well. But again, our harbor master thought these were decent rates and he gave me several rates to choose from and I thought about having my boat slip down there and what I had to pay and what these guys usually borrow and what they're gonna have to pay. Also consider our historical captains have been down there and truthfully, they get more use out of the docks than the common guys, but this does give some consideration to them as well. Not just the captains, but other skippers who, folks have been there for a long time. Any other questions about that? Any from the floor?
Do we have cleaning stations?
We have two cleaning stations built into the plan. They'll be the absolute last thing to go down there and we all don't necessarily agree that we should put them in at all. The prohibition of throwing your heads in the canal, that could be an invitation to do that, but they will not have grinding stations. So, there will just be a cleaning station if and when we put them in, but they'd be the last thing we put in on the project. Next item on the agenda, Thirty-Sixth Street Resolution and Agreement. Little background, the federal government is going to replace the Woodbridge on Thirty-Sixth Street. We are, we have no requirement at all, other than to agree, number one, to support the project, number two, to ready to close Thirty-Sixth Street at the bridge when they start construction, which is scheduled for the spring of eighteen. And they'll also give a road, a parped road into the boat parking area, come in through the pine trees to the back door to supply the residents on Thirty-Seven, Thirty-Eighth Street, an alternate way to be in while the bridge is under construction. I don't see any drawback to this personally. It's not costing us a thing and we're gonna end up with a brand-new concrete bridge for Thirty-Sixth Street. Comments?
Have a bad one now, I'm for it.
Took our seven pages to tell us that, at least.
The only question is, how much higher is it gonna be? Only one foot to fifteen inches more clearance than it is now.
They couldn't make it because the length would have to be longer, is that right?
If it had to be higher, number one, it's whatever the Coast Guard and the engineers say, they're gonna build it, first of all. The Coast Guard actually has to say how high the bridge is. From our standpoint, it would actually infringe on four property owners' property to make it higher because the ingress and egress to the bridge would have to be longer. Yes, ma'am?
I've read this and I'm assuming that this is probably just a boilerplate resolution coming from DOT, something that they standard to do.
Yes, ma'am.
It's very curious to me that what you just covered, no land is to be taken, bridge is not to be, the approach is not to be extended, so no other land is involved, yet there are seven instances in this where they say, "If necessary, the city will not stop DOT from taking the land," and they mentioned eminent domain. I realize this is a boilerplate template, but why would you want to even put that in there if you have no intention of using eminent domain or seizing private property? Because that, to me, is very suspicious. And I talked to DOT, I called them on Friday and I said, "Do you plan to take any property?" And they said, "No, we don't do eminent domain." And I disagreed with them. They said, "What we only do is a matter of class disorder." And I disagreed with them, saying, "Well, we only do it as a matter of private accord, and in this case, we don't intend to take any property." So my question would be, why would the city, why can't they send some other ones? I know they've got more than this one resolution template. Why can't they send one that does not mention that?
Nick, I'll give that one to you. I have an answer, but would you like to address that?
I can't.
Why would we include a clause that's not required?
I wouldn't say this is totally standard, but I think probably the issue is they're not 100% certain of the design and their building and flexibility. All I know is what I've discussed with Mel, and it sounds like it's unlikely that eminent domain will be used. And I would imagine, despite these agreements and resolutions, if the city strongly objected to something down the road, probably the city could put the halt on something, but yes, that is a little bit of a unique thing on these documents to emphasize eminent domain so much.
I have, I'll give you my answer as well. I have a comfort level after meeting with these folks about the project. For example, everybody who's got a boat upstream of the bridge are gonna be personally notified by DOT, and the owners of the property adjacent to the project are going to be talked to at length by them. And if any property had to be taken, it wouldn't just be of scoundrel, those owners might be willing to agree to it, and only as a last resort would it be confiscated. But the design of the bridge doesn't call for that. I have a comfort level of what they're doing.
Not sure trusting soul.
If eminent domain were used, I mean, there's a very detailed process, it would be the standard process, violence wouldn't somehow circumvent all of that. It's all statutory, a lot of notice, a lot of protections for property owners. Generally, the compensation's quite good to property owners.
Yes, sir.
The contract says also that if you don't agree to that, then they have the right to just pull out of the deal as well. So, you know, it's just very suspicious to me that they would want all of these statements that say, "If necessary..." The plans are only 60% complete, is what the answer I got. That leaves a lot of wiggle room. I just find it awfully strange. Nick just said that it seems a bit unusual to him. Why don't you ask them for a template that doesn't have that in there?
Would you stand against this resolution if you were elected council?
Yes, I would. As it is stated, yes, I would. Yes, I would.
Okay, Captain.
I'm concerned the Coast Guard Department of Transportation's only 60% complete in their planning, and I absolutely believe that the Corps, in particular, Jack and John, is going to try to get the department to raise that bridge higher so that they can develop, you know, have more opportunities for development of planning. I'm willing to develop the property, and it doesn't bother me if they raise a bridge. See, I'm a homeowner over there on the other side of that bridge, but it doesn't bother me if they wanna raise the bridge. But according to this resolution, you're opening up by eminent domain that the state can change the height of the bridge and require more property on each side of the country. If they do increase that height, they have got to have more property than what they have now. And what you all are doing by passing this reservation is giving them the quiet little field to do whatever, take whoever's property they want to take. And I don't think that's quite fair to the homeowners. That's my problem with the resolution here, and providing them with absolute opportunity to take whatever they want.
Are they in the process...
They don't have to come back and ask you again.
Are they in the process of condemning this bridge?
No, it's just on, it just came up on a national fixing list.
We haven't passed a bridge inspection in quite some time.
We haven't passed a bridge...
No, it's not suitable as it is.
So what does that mean in the long term?
If we don't fix it?
Yeah.
We need to stop driving, the archer trucks across it, we need to stop driving, don't drive a fire truck across it, don't drive anything that's heavier than an SUV across it. I wouldn't even drive that across it.
Your comments are appreciated, and we'll look into that. I appreciate if you look into that, Nick, and see if we can, if there's any wiggle room for a different template.
She hasn't faced with our...
I don't think just because we resolved to support the project, we're not giving permission for them to do car blocks. They still have to follow all the procedures for, that they have to use to confiscate property.
Well, and they have to have the design completed before they can start it, so why couldn't they have the design completed that we could see?
That was my question. Why can't we hold off on this until, from 60% to 100%, a lot of changes can be made? So if we hold off on this until it gets to 100% or very close to it, and then make a decision?
Argue a fee change.
I mean, we need the bridge, we need the bridge, so you don't wanna...
Are you mad?
You don't wanna...
Jeff, I understand that we have another resolution coming very shortly, a resolution
to support the beach to Bay Parkway. And we don't have plans for that either, but if we don't support it, they're gonna go back to Bay County, and Bay County's gonna support it, and we don't have any say in it at all in the project.
Yeah, you see, there's no industry on the other side of that bridge, you know, the real purpose of the bridge, and this will be the third time that bridge has been rebuilt, but I rebuilt it back when I was mayor the first time, you know? Anyway, the only purpose of redoing this is for the development of the Coria property. And raising that bridge just a foot or so is not going to provide them with the access to and from the property that they desire.
Chuck, the last meeting that I went to with these folks did not seriously consider the development of the Coria property. It was more a matter of, this is what the federal government's gonna give us to do what we intended, is just to replace the bridge, not to provide severe ingress and egress for development behind the area. And some of the comments that Mr. Coria made to those representatives, they really said that the Coast Guard has a lot to do with the waterway, and the Coast Guard has to have a way in on it, which they did last time I talked to him. Do you have more information, Mel?
I was just gonna say that after these concerns came up this afternoon about the eminent domain issue, I tried calling the actual engineer that's designing the project to see if we can postpone it or get more details about that, to give a comfort level to some of the citizens. And I wasn't able to contact him this afternoon, he was out of the office. So as soon as I get in contact with him, I'll try to button all this stuff up and bring it back with the information everybody needs.
I'm sure we can accomplish that before next week.
Mel, have we heard from the four property owners that are associated with this?
We have not.
They haven't necessarily noticed that I know this is still in the planning phase.
Right.
I'm not against the bridge being rebuilt. I've been over it, I know it needs to be replaced, but I just find it a concern that those phrases were in this resolution, and I know darn well they thought of the resolutions that could be less...
Sure, they're absolutely trying to cover all their bases.
Yeah, well, the city needs to cover its bases, too.
I agree.
Same thing, I'm not against the bridge being rebuilt, and I'm not against the Corps developing a property whatsoever. I'm just concerned with the resolution and what you all provided, the state the opportunity without any further, you know, comfort with you all and taking some of the people's property there to do the bridge. That's my only concern.
And they know that concern, because the meeting we were at, we talked about that in great length. Okay? Let's look at the legalities and look at getting the answers to those things. We've heard they've contacted those four people involved, and just get their opinion here. It pushes them to show.
Maybe we can even get a date of when they think that they will have the plan completed so that we can move on that?
Yeah, I don't see why we have to do anything.
Winter of 2017.
Probably.
No, that's...
Winter...
I met with them out there a few weeks back on the site.
What, when are they gonna have it ready?
100% plans.
When?
When?
Next winter of 2017.
Well, I mean, would the bridge hold up till then? I think so.
Well, it's not gonna be built anyhow until the 18th, 2018. That's another year in the last.
Another year.
Yep.
We know they move slow, but...
I just want everybody to understand that government, you're right, bureaucrat, paper pushers, I'll give you a good example. Farmdale, that just all of a sudden popped up on our radar, they've been talking to the coastal construction folks, the Department of National Resources, the Corps of Engineers, and the Department of National Resources for two years, and they still have the ability to get a development order because of one little piece of paper here and there. And one of those pieces of paper is whether or not we're gonna give them water and sewer. And as you know, that involves a lot for us to consider that. But that's how far out the planning has been, and I understand this is too. So let's get some more answers before we approve this resolution. Put it on the agenda so we'll at least talk about it whether we vote on it or not. Planning and zoning recommendations from last night, Mel?
Yes, sir. Planning and zoning met last night. There was a variance request from the property owner at 3203 Highway 98 Unit C for a zero side setback and rear setback for the purpose of putting in a boardwalk, so to speak, over a current drainage swell. And after deliberation by the board and the public, the recommendation was to deny the variance request. And of course, that's something that you'll be hearing next Tuesday night at your regular meeting. Also, they approved the city hall development order. The current date for the public engagement workshop that was canceled last week will be at the regular meeting in January, which is January the 4th. And lastly, we approved the meeting schedule for 2017. And that was it.
Okay. Is there anyone here that wants to give information about those issues from last night? Did anybody come on purpose just to talk about that tonight? Okay. We have all those documents that we need to read. And they're miscellaneous, no?
Yes, sir. Many of you might know that Tucans is in the process of going through an auction, I think this weekend, but in advance of that, the owners of Tucans came in to look at an agreement that the city had with the owners of Tucans years ago, which was the area where the walkover is by their business, as well as the tables and seating at that little patio. That is owned by the city, it's not owned by Tucans. But the city had provided a lease to the owners for a 20-year period for $1 per year. The reason it was so cheap was because, I understand, the owners of Tucans years ago put in the bathroom, put in the walkover, and all the amenities that are there, so that was the sweetening deal. They're responsible for the maintenance of the walkover, they insure it in case there's an accident, things of that sort. I told them that I would try my best to bring up before the city council an updated agreement, which was the old agreement with the new dates. But on further review, by talking to others in the office today, as well as our city attorney, the feeling was that it might be better not to do a new agreement, because at this point, we have no idea who was gonna own Tucans in a few years. So it was recommended that we simply extend the agreement that is current for one year to give the sale of Tucans, if it gets sold, to go ahead and proceed. So if that was something the board wanted to do, we could go ahead and have our city attorney draft up some language and get it to the folks later this week.
I agree with that approach. I'd like to have this conversation with, if there's gonna be a new owner, I'd like to have it with the new owners. If it doesn't change hands and it continues with the malaria as it is now, then all we have to do is just do a new agreement if it's gonna be the same. I also don't have a problem with Tucans continuing to use that walkover and maintaining that as long as they cover the insurance and all that stuff that goes with it. I think at least also it covers the parking in front of Tucans as well. That's the parking on the right away, that's something that's been done for 20 years. And it is a real icon in Mexico Beach. I'd hate to see it go anywhere. But what if, for example, somebody bought it and decided to tear it down? Then they would have to meet current code to build anything back, and it certainly wouldn't ever look like Tucans is today, because they'd have to build it 17 feet above the level of the sea, and it would have to be so-and-so-and-so, not more than 32 feet tall. A lot of requirements have changed over the last 20 years, not to mention inside the CCCL and go through all those hoops.
I agree. I think the one-year agreement with the current owners covers bases on both sides.
Why couldn't we say, as long as they're current owners, the agreement stands for one year? And should they sell the property, then we'd have to work out another agreement with the new owners at that time, and we wouldn't be obligating ourselves to do anything.
We could add a clause into the extension to take care of that.
You could. I would think, I haven't spoken to anybody at Tucans or the auction folks, but probably the idea is they wanna ensure that that lease, even a short lease, would survive the sale, so if someone came in to operate the restaurant, they'd be confident that they could use that area, and it would be a clean sale.
Well, but same, I mean, same token, we wanna be sure of what they're gonna do, the new owners are going to do too. We may not wanna extend that. I don't think there's, I mean, 99% sure we will, but who knows what they're gonna do there?
Well, the other consideration, too, I just wanna point out, I am gonna strengthen some of the language to make sure we have a good public purpose for providing a practically free lease, making sure it's a public area where the public can use and benefit from it. Otherwise, it's a little questionable to provide that sort of lease, but I think you have a lot of discretion about what you'd wanna do.
Okay. Anything else, old Miss Lanes?
I have something.
Please.
Can I speak? I think we should put pickets up on the other side of the fence at the park, because we require everybody else in the city to do the same. The fact that Lisa mentioned that, it's bugged me every time I drive by there and look at that. I don't know. I mean, if we don't have the money to do it, we oughta just stop where we are till we can afford to do it. It's not that expensive in the first place. What say you?
So you mean to complete the fence on both sides?
Yes.
I agree.
Well, I mean, that's what we expect out of everybody else.
I agree.
You know, and I agree, the best form of government is a benevolent dictatorship, but we're not there. So, anyway.
In retrospect, we should've put that stuff the other way in retrospect. The reason that we did put it up that way made all the sense in the world. It was a free fence for those folks on 26th Street, and we put it up so the citizens of Mexico Beach could enjoy the fence looking better on the park side.
I agree with that.
That was the decision. The fence guy didn't put it up wrong. It was a conscious decision. You can't make everybody happy any of the time, and I would also agree, let's go back and double side the fence.
Yeah.
If it's that important...
It is.
Let's double side the fence. It'll come out of park funds if we have it left.
Here's my personal issue with that fence. And of course, I'm not a property owner there, I mean, they have their own ideas about it. But it was the fact that the city is supposed to abide by its own ordinances, and the fact that every time it was brought up in a meeting, at least three meetings that I can pinpoint, the answer was, "Well, we're the city, we don't have to." And the people said, "Well, does that mean we don't have to obey it?" "Oh, no, you have to turn around and obey the ordinance." It was the arrogance of it, and the fact that the city just made this decision... It was the arrogance of it, and the fact that the city just made this decision to do it that way because it looked pretty. It's the fact that the city did not treat the residents and the citizens the way they needed to be treated with that fence, and the city arrogantly chose to disobey its own ordinance. That's my issue with it. Whatever you want to do with the fence, it's that point.
I don't agree that it was an arrogant decision. It was a decision that we felt liked was for the benefit of the citizens.
Well, here's also-
And we do have the ability to give ourselves a variance, and that's why I said, I didn't say what you said about it.
But that process was not followed. But here's something that should, I toss this out, I sent this to Linda earlier, she's talking about the murals, and I think that's a great idea, because that's a nice big white space. I think that fence, that hugely, what, three hundred feet or so of fence, is an excellent opportunity for the city to encourage some type of marine art that can be put on alternating panels, or every two or three panels, or five or six panels, large pieces of artwork that will give, that's a superb art display area. And I'm talking permanently installed pieces of art. It would give the city something very unique. It would tie into the city's whole atmosphere, and it would be a focal point of the park and of the city. So that is just something that I think should be considered along the murals on the back line, because the fence has a chance to be something more than a fence there. So I'd just like to toss that out to the council.
I did get your email, and I was going to get with you to get some ideas together before I presented it, and thinking, let's get the mural up and going, and then let's throw in another idea.
That's a long-term opportunity.
Right, right.
Having been an art major some four hundred years ago, I don't disagree with that. As a matter of fact, this, make a note of this, this is two things that Lisa and I have agreed on. And I think that'd be good. There's just so many other little things we need to get done prior to that, but the fence is always going to be there.
Yes. Well, let's just keep that in play at some point. Thank you. And Jared, I don't know what to say.
Delph, you were spent here last week. Where are we at going toward the sixteen?
Didn't start the audit yet, we're truing up the year. He's got to come back probably another week, and he's going to get back to me this week to tell me when.
Okay, so it'll likely be in January or February?
They told me that they want to do us first instead of last this year. They rotate their city clients through. We were last last year, they want to do ours first.
That's good. Where are we at on pulling the dredge?
Still waiting on bids, haven't received a single one.
If we receive no bids from our advertisement, then what are we going to do?
Well, I spoke with Miller Marine Friday, and they have the capabilities, they have a tugboat, they don't know about a timeframe, when it will become available, but they did say that they absolutely could come over here and pick it up. I was hoping to get it over there on the nineteenth of the twentieth of this month. If we don't get any bids, I think the process is to rebid it. Is that right?
I'd have to look again, but yeah. I think we can call and solicit, but still have to put it out and see if we know anybody that will.
If we get no bids, that's the case. But if we get at least one bid, we can accept that bidder.
You can, unless you've got a grant or something that would prohibit that. But ordinarily, yes, you can.
This is out of pocket.
Maybe you need to call them and tell them to submit a bid.
I already have.
Are they going to?
She's going to take care of it. We're going to have to get real creative. That dredge has got to get out this one so we can get it back.
Times it forward.
Well, our other issue is the push boat.
Not our push boat.
Our push boat.
It sinks at the canal.
It sunk the other day.
We want to send it on a twenty-mile trip.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying our other issue is that our push boat, it's not just our dredge that's in force, it's our push boat as well. Found out last week, I think it was, talking with some of the guys that have been there much longer than I have, you know, that push boat's thirty-plus years old. We pulled it out a few weeks ago, wire-wheeled the hull, tried to find every crack and hole that we could, and patched them up the best we could. Didn't work. Sunk again. We were lucky this time that the motor didn't go under, so that didn't cost us any money, we just pulled it out. But our practice for the time being is going to be whenever we dredge, we use the push boat, when we're done, we pull it out and take it to the yard. Can't afford to leave it down there.
Because the day is the sixth, so we've really got to take some action in the next fourteen days till we get the dredge out.
Yeah, we'll have an answer by the end of next week.
How much does the boat cost, push boat? You don't have to get a pretty one.
Well, I spoke with a company to get a custom-built boat, brand-new trailer, it's an actual push boat, it's got push bars, bumper rail, it's got a wraparound platform on the back of the boat. It's carpeted, and it's got a bimby top, it cut down on reflective heat of the person having to run it and sit out there all day with it. Do not quote me on this, but it was like just over thirteen thousand for the boat and
It's cheaper than I would thought.
It's a lot cheaper than what I would have thought, and it's an eighteen-foot boat. Now, that's not the motor included. We can limp through with what we have until next year, assuming we don't sink it ninety-five times.
Can everybody that uses this boat swim?
They do.
Okay.
It actually caught on fire not that long ago too.
Well, maybe the best thing that could happen would be burnt up, you know? Do they have insurance?
Sure.
Yeah, we got insurance on it.
Sink it.
I think the deductible is more than what it's worth.
Any other comments, Miss Lanes, from the floor? Motion-
I have one.
We got to read the agenda too.
Yeah. The discussion came up today with City Hall about impact fees. I don't know the answer, and I can argue both sides, but do we pay ourselves impact fees?
Pay ourselves? We collect them?
We're building a City Hall that has an impact fee due on any construction there, but do we pay ourselves an impact fee?
I'll handle it. The answer is no, unless for some reason our ordinance where we establish the impact fees would require it.
Same reason we don't pay taxes on our buildings.
Perfect. That's all I have.
Please review the agenda.
All right. The usual, down through the minutes, scheduled appearances, I've got Dewberry, public hearing. There's going to be a public hearing for the variance request at thirty-two oh three, Highway ninety-eight, Unit C. Under ordinances, we have a whole bunch of second readings. Six fifty-five, six fifty-six, six fifty-seven, six fifty-eight, six fifty-nine. Those are all the ones that were read in November, the first time, cleaning up those ordinances from the codification plus the budget amendment from that meeting. There's the two resolutions for the Thirty-Sixth Street Bridge. I will keep them on for now, pending more information. If we're not ready, we'll take them off. Under other business, I have Thirty-Sixth Street Agreement, but that's covered by one of the resolutions? No? Maybe?
One resolution approves the agreement.
So I can remove that, that doesn't need to be there. And then reports, so I have nothing under other business. Two resolutions, five ordinances, and a public hearing.
I ask you about twelve minutes. Other comments?
I have a comment. For anybody in the audience and anybody who's listening on the tape, our market is this Saturday, Mexico Beach Market. It will not be in Mexico Beach because of our beautiful Christmas display at Sunset Park. We're going to have it at Veterans Park in Beacon Hill. And speaking of the Christmas display, the tree lighting ceremony, I personally thought that it was one of the best, and I want to personally thank L. Governor, they provide all of the decorations. It is their gift to the city. Wiley Petty designs it all, and with the help of Troy, gets the lights on the trees and the exact spaces where they belong, and I just think that they do a fabulous job. So thank you, L. Governor, Wiley, and Troy.
Let's not forget-
I agree.
Let's please not forget Nick, Ben, and Thomas, Pam, and Bill, who also helped on that-
Okay, I did not know that, thank you.
They all helped as well.
And probably your machine, what do you call it? Bucket.
Manly.
Okay. Tom's bucket.
On the draft agenda, did you want to add an item for the lease extension to Tucans that we discussed?
That's great, we should.
Are we going to have to vote on putting the pickets up on the fence?
No.
Good.
I need to know how much.
There's any money in there?
Yeah, that's, it might be a budget amendment, might need to find funds, but I highly doubt that. How much is it going to cost?
It's going to be extremely minimal.
It'll be at least a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's extremely minimal.
But as the city manager's approval authority.
Can we get letters out to the homeowners there, once we've made a final decision and we vote on it? Could we please send letters to them indicating that this is what we're going to do and when we think that construction will attempt to begin?
Talking about the fence?
Yeah.
I didn't think we were going to vote on it.
Oh, we're not voting on it? Okay, so then can we-
Reaffirm that.
All right, all right. So can we send a letter out to all the homeowners that will be affected by that, indicating that we're going to do this, and our potential beginning date will be, or within two or three weeks, or, I don't know, I just think that they need to be contacted.
I mean, we can postpone it. I mean, we could start on this project tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So just, how long do you want us to wait to start on it?
No, it's starting tomorrow, you can't wait.
We're going to end up being in their yards, putting it on their side, so we're going to have to notify them.
Yeah, I think we need to notify them, just to let them know that we're doing it, just out of common courtesy and nothing else.
Yeah, we don't want to be the-
Benevolent dictatorship. Yeah, we do need to know we're going to be in their yard improving the fence.
Benevolent dictatorship.
Benevolent dictatorship, yeah.
I don't know what that is, but we don't want it. Other comments?
Second, third, fourth.